Name new members as quickly as possible. As Chair of the Recreation Board, Mr. Patterson, have you had an opportunity to bring forth any names for the replacement of these folks that have resigned?
Yes.
You want to do them all one at a time? Let's do them one at a time if you can give me a nomination for someone to be appointed to the REC board.
I make a motion to nominate Lou Torres to the Recreation Board.
Second.
I have a motion made in second for the appointment of Lou Torres to the Eddie Stone Recreation Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to nominate Caitlin Riley to the Recreation Board.
Second.
I have a motion made in second to appoint Caitlin Riley to the Recreation Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to nominate Alan Reeves III to the Recreation Board.
Need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Alan Reeves III to the Recreation Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Patterson, what I will charge you to do is to get a meeting of the REC board, which I believe our regularly scheduled meeting is next Tuesday.
Correct.
With Mr. Quinn being the former President of the REC board and Ms. Quinn, Hope Quinn being the Secretary Treasurer, you will need to have the REC board reorganized with officers. It is their responsibility to elect their own officers, so that could be first order of business Tuesday of next week. And, you know, also this happening right at the time where we're gearing up to start basketball season, I do know from past experience that, you know, Lou is very familiar with the way that we operated previously and familiar with the leagues that we participate in, so, you know, if we can get a report from you next month on, you know, the reorganization of the REC board and how we're moving forward with making sure that we have an uninterrupted program for the children of Eddie Stone, I'd appreciate it.
Can I make a request?
Sure.
Can I have Mr. Patterson draw something up for the REC board to be responsible for all financials on August 28th moving forward? And the past President, Vice President, and other REC board members responsible for that before, before the 20th, August 27th.
So you were the previous REC board to hand in all financial or information?
To the REC board, you were responsible for the fund meetings that the REC board funds right now.
Okay. To the Borough, official Borough Record should indicate that the REC board that was just appointed that will be reorganized next Tuesday has taken responsibility for finances.
From August 28th moving forward.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
Upcoming public meetings, our next step, we're out of the summer season, so on the 6th of October at 7 o'clock in Borough Council Chambers will be our Borough Council Workshop meeting. And the following Monday, the 13th of October, will be our regular Borough Council meeting. I'm going to wait for this machine to pop up so we can go through the website real quick. So I will jump to roundtable discussions. I will start to my right with Mayor Reeves and I will find you the concerns you have with the ordinance on mini bikes, just for the purposes.
The ordinance on our mini, mini bikes and motorcycles, these was first adopted by prior 1975, the problem I have with it is, at least the problem I have with it is there's section 191 dash four, and there states that we do what I think the vehicle from the person operating it to the Borough Hall, they can be treated for $50. I think that should be taken out or changed to where we can obfuscate the bike and sell it or whatever. That's just pushing some laws.
Do a message on someone's events and we always have to tell facilities, take, maybe look at, see if, see if, now, if they're secure or if they're being sold.
Because we are, we are having a problem with the hazard now with the APVs, the mini bikes, give a lot of these streets and stuff.
Did the existing ordinance number it?
Chapter 191.
Orders 435. Orders 435. Counsel, what I'll ask is did you take an opportunity to review chapter 191, the ordinance 435, which pertains to mini bikes and motorcycles? If we're going to go through the process of amending the order, the ordinance, we might as well, you know, look at all of the language and work with Mr. Duffy over the next month. You typically have to advertise it in the paper too, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, so we'll, we'll work with him over the next 30 days. We'll have comments to you by next council meeting and then we can take the appropriate action of advertising and making the necessary amendments. Mayor Reeves?
What else? What else you've got tonight?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for the appointment to the Chief of Police, and it's why everyone knows that we'll work hard for a member of the community, and my door is always open. Always to answer my email, and I will try to get down to you if I can, please, on the station, I'll try to now speak to you and interrupt what you're concerned about. One of the new additions, I'm happy to say, the K-9 for Eddie Stone Police Department is underway. Last Friday at 3:00 in the morning, the handler Officer Allard traveled to Ohio with Officer Quinlan from Perfect Park Police Department. Each of our departments did take possession of the K-9. Received a male German Shepherd, born 5/15/13, and today was his first day of training in Womington, K-9 Police Academy, the handler William Allard. I'd also like to mention that this is all possible from Biddy and Dodge. Biddy and Dodge paid a $64, $100 fee for the doll. They're providing us with a 2012 Dodge Charger retrofit for a K-9. They are taking our Dodge Durango we have now and making it into a backup K-9 unit. All those donations, they're super.
Bingo, the name of, the name of the K-9. I like bingo. I like, I like the name thing.
But easy to spell for the kids.
Yeah, Bingo the Attack Dog.
Thank you for your patience this evening, it's been a very long meeting for us.
Yes, sir.
Anything to share?
We have one item, on Friday morning, we're taking the proposals for the sidewalk replacement in front of our hall.
Okay.
So we'll know Friday just where we stand.
What's that?
That project is funded by Delaware County.
Okay.
So at next month's meeting, if everything's in order, we can make an award.
That's a community development block grant?
That's right.
We received for, for the sidewalk improvements?
That's right.
What is the scope of work? I know we're doing some sidewalk repairs.
Just the block, just the block where the, our hall is.
Okay.
From 12th Street up to the alley.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I promised Councilman Donahue that I would start to the right, so congratulations, Junior Councilperson Emma Gross. Oh, Emma Gross. Emma Trippett, I apologize. Welcome to our table. Hopefully this will be an educational experience for you over the next essentially two years. I did provide you with a handbook and, you know, each month we'll give you the opportunity to open up and make whatever comments you'd like. Do you have any comments for this evening?
I just wanted to say thank you for this office committee, and I'll be carrying on my 13 year council in the name of my, oh, you don't put time right, chief.
I just want to say congratulations to all the police officers who are supporting it. Congratulations to Emma, you're going to do great. Congratulations to Ed. Also thank you to Judge Mallon and Judge Turner.
Vice President Reeves.
First off, I would like to apologize to all the residents here for my outburst a little while ago. Now, I've sat up here for, this is my 13th year, through the past year and a half, two years, all I've heard about is transparency, yet when I ask for somebody to be transparent, I'm in the wrong. Again, I apologize. Emma, congratulations. Ed, congratulations. And congratulations to our new officers. Thank you.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Patterson.
I'd also like to congratulate Emma Trippett. A thank you to Judge Mallon and Judge Turner. Congratulations to Chief Macheski, Officers Gleam, Golden and Coyle. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Lou Torres, Caitlin Riley, Alan Reeves III, everyone else on REC, you guys are dynamite. Basketball signups start this Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 6 to 8. Please come out and sign up. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross.
I just want to reiterate all the good things, what are positive, and wish everybody well in their job, and, and just pray that they remain safe. Thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight.
Councilman Donahue.
I'd like to congratulate Emma and all the officers and their positions.
Congratulations, Chief. Look forward to continuing to work together. Congratulations to not only Officer Coyle and Officer Gleam and Officer Golden, but their families as well. It was overwhelming to see the amount of support that was in the auditorium this evening for those folks that are now joining the Police Department. Congratulations, Emma, for your appointment as Junior Councilperson to address Ms. Jones' concerns about the formation of this Delco Youth Club, or the DYC Gators. I have, I'm saddened that Norm Quinn and Hope Quinn have decided that after 10-plus years of serving on the Recreation Board, that not only have they resigned, but the indication that was given to me when I did speak with Hope shortly after they attended their resignation was that, you know, the, you spend a lot of time running the recreational programs for our children. It is definitely a commitment of time and, you know, I, according to Hope, you know, Norm is taking on additional hours at work, he's got a second job, you know, there's a lot of stress associated with, you know, the sitting as, you know, a member of the Recreation Board, and they were the reasons why, that I was given of why they were going to attend to their resignation, which I respect those reasons. I certainly respect those reasons. Then to find out that that wasn't necessarily truthful and that they wanted to start this Delco Youth Club, and in my own personal opinion, anybody that wants to help the children, it's a, it's a good cause. You know, however, in Norm's position as President of the Recreation Board, as President, he has the opportunity to be the leader and to guide the programs in the direction in which he believes is best to guide the programs. You know, we have a liaison from Council. Dave Patterson is the Chair of that committee. We have other Council members that are part of that Council Committee. Danielle, help me out. I know you are a member of the, of the committee?
No, not me.
Well, you were a member of the committee or? And Beth Gross, you know, it is Council's responsibility to hear what the needs of the REC board are, whether they be financially, whether they, you know, need, you know, some support from Council, and that's how the relationship is supposed to work, is, is that, you know, Council isn't micromanaging the day-to-day operations of the REC board, you know, it's, we don't set, you know, what the age groups are, we don't set what leagues we play in, we don't set, you know, what night of the week certain people play, we don't set how the day-to-day operations are run. That's the President of Council, or the President of the REC board's responsibility. And, you know, in my opinion, Norm had that tool. Norm could make that REC board whatever Norm wanted to make that REC board, and I have given Norm my support on numerous occasions that said, you know, "Norm, you're the leader. If you're stressed out and you don't believe the other eight members of the REC board are doing what they're supposed to be doing, you know, hey, throw up the red flags, bring those concerns to Council. Council makes the appointment. If, if there's, if there's individuals that you don't think are carrying their weight, then, you know, hey, sound the alarms, and we're here to work with you hand-in-hand." And I am very disappointed to learn that he is starting this Delco Youth Club. I have made several phone calls to both Hope and Norm. I've requested meetings, did not want, I wanted to have their side of the story before we had something publicly. You know, however, there is definitely a need to move on for the best interests of the children. You know, Eddie Stone has always had a very strong program for the kids, whether it be basketball, whether it be baseball, softball, whether it be a lot of the activities that we have for the holidays throughout the year. The REC board is strong, and the REC board will continue to be strong, and we're going to continue business as usual and put the program together. Sure. Do you want to comment or do you want me to finish up?
Let you finish up.
Let me finish up. From what I understand, and these are the questions that I will, when I do have an opportunity to sit with the Quins, the questions that are going to be asked is, you know, number one, you know, what type of organization do you have? You know, have you submitted to get an EIN number? Is it an LLC? Is it an athletic club? How, how are you organized? Number one. Number two, what's the pool of individuals that you're going to be allowing to participate? Is this Eddie Stone residents only? Is this residents of Eddie Stone as well as children of the Ridley School District? Or is this all of Delaware County? The, the one flyer I have says it's all of Delaware County. What insurances do you have? What, you know, what is, what is protecting our children? What insurance policy do you have that God forbid one of the kids get hurt, that they're going to be able to be treated properly? And then what facilities do you have? You know, we have a recreation center. We're able to open up Lighthouse Hall seven days a week and carry on the activities for our children. My understanding is, is that they do have a permit to use Eddie Stone Elementary School, or they've submitted a permit to use Eddie Stone Elementary School. That permit has not been approved as of yet because the school district is asking a lot of the same questions that I'm asking. So, you know, I will continue to do diligence as President of Council. I'll continue to try to reach out to the Quins. I'll try to continue to figure out, you know, what, what the purpose behind this youth club is. However, I'll give the public assurances this evening that our recreational program is going to continue on business as usual. We've named new members of the REC board, we will reorganize, and we will continue to offer the same exact programs that we've always offered to the REC board. Councilwoman Gross.
I'd just like to make this comment, just not for me personally, but I had been on Borough Rec before, when my kids were little, on rec. I wasn't a representative, I was a parent. And what I learned from that is, just because you joined Borough Rec doesn't mean you can just say you're on Borough Rec. That means is, when they have a meeting, you attend. If you can't attend, you call somebody. When we have an event like the Easter Egg Hunt, Memorial Day, that means you come and help. It means don't come, you know, but still you're Borough Rec. If you don't apply yourself to the position, then you have no reason to question why people would say, "Where are you?" So if you join Borough Rec, believe me, it's work. You just can't say you're Borough Rec. You actually have to attend meetings, find out what's going on, and then help the people that are working the event. Helping with the eggs, helping the parents, you know, there's a lot of help that's needed on that day, Memorial Day. You need parents to, with this activity, you need to help kids on and off, so I'm just saying, you know, when people join something, you just can't say you joined. You have to physically show up and prepare the, the games or whatever and help out, you know, so that, that's just my two cents.
Yes, sir.
If Councilwoman Thompson is stepping down from Recreation Committee, I'd like to assign, make a motion to nominate Despo Tadashor to that.
I'm ahead of you.
Sorry.
The assignment of all of the Council Committees is the President's decision. We don't necessarily need a motion of Council. It's, you know, I have that ability to be able to appoint whichever Council members, I believe, would serve vessel news boards. I have received the text message from Councilwoman Thompson. She has asked through that text message to be removed from the Recreation Committee as a Committee of Borough Council. That is, that request is acceptable to me, and I do agree with you that Despo Tadashor would make a good replacement, so our Council Committee records will be updated to reflect that Councilman Dave Patterson is the Chair, and Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Tadashor are members of Council that serve on that committee with you. Very quickly, before we adjourn, we are hours away from the launch of the new Eddie Stone website. Just to give everybody a preview, I've put it up on the screen. The way that it is organized is the homepage will give you upcoming events, so this way here, if you've got a question of what a Borough Council meeting is, it'll be right on the website. When we put the information about the flea market for the Fire Department, it will be in that left column on the website. When we put the information up about the cowpiper bingo, it'll be up there on the website. When we have basketball signups, it'll be up there on the website. When we have baseball and softball signups, it'll be up there on the website. So everything will be at your fingertips. Give you a quick overview. Where is Eddie Stone? We give a geographical location, we give information of where we're located in relationship to the major airports, we give information about the public transportation, we give driving distances from where we're at with major interstates, we also have our legislative representation on the where is Eddie Stone. News. We will be putting a news blog together, and we will have real-time information on the news blog, so for this evening, we have already put in that three full-time patrol officers have been appointed, and District Judge Phil Turner, Minister of the Oath of Offices Paul Gleam, Michael Golden, and Shane Coyle were appointed to full-time patrol officers with the Borough of Eddie Stone Police Department. Mr. Gleam is a 2011 graduate of Delaware County Police Academy, and he has served in the Infantry Division of the Pennsylvania Army National Guard from 2008 to 2014. He was a part-time officer with the Eddie Stone Police Department since 2012. Michael Golden's a 2009 graduate of Delaware County Police Academy, and Shane Coyle is a graduate, a graduate of Williams and Trade School and has associate degree in machine tool technology. He's been a part-time officer in both Walcroft and Aston, so it gives that information about the folks that we have in our employ. We also have got information that's already up on the website that we can read about the naming of our new Police Chief. Congratulations, Emma Macheski. And you can learn about when Ed Macheski joins the Police Department and what his educational credentials are. We'll also keep everybody informed of what's going on with the K-9 unit, as well as the promotions of Lieutenant Elliott and Sergeant Matt McNamee. I'm sorry. What did I say? Lieutenant Fritti. It's been a long day. Lieutenant Fritti and Sergeant Matt McNamee.
We get out.
Administrative staff.
Your autograph here to the meeting, man.
We've also got a lot of very helpful information about our code enforcement as it pertains to both residential work and commercial work. Recognition of our public work staff. Good group shot of our Police Department.
And Secretary.
Oh, Kath, that's a good picture.
A collection of all of our elected officials, as well as what committees they serve on, and email addresses. And at this time, I will let all of Council know that when this does go live, your email address is your first initial, your last name, at eddystoneborough.org. If you have not already taken the opportunity to set up your email, please do so at this time. If you have lost the instructions that Stevie G has sent you, I will resend them. When this goes live, a resident that wants to contact a Borough Council member will click on the send an email, and it will go to your Borough email address. Some good photos of our emergency services through our Fire Department, and let us not forget what has become a very active ladies auxiliary.
There you go.
And this is actually my favorite part of the website is that we have, over the years, named some of our parks and fields over residents that, you know, have made a difference in the borough. Those who have just moved in don't necessarily know who Nancy Scout, Scott Callen is, or who Bessie Barbara was, or who Dorothy Taylor Dodd at are, so we've taken the opportunity to reintroduce the impact that these individuals have made on the community, so that the children of this generation understand what these folks have done in their lifetime to make a difference in Eddie Stone, and why members of Council would have taken the opportunity to name a park or a field after those individuals. We've not named the park in the Village, but we do have the Don Marion Field, which is behind Lighthouse Hall. And the other favorite part for me personally is the information that we have about our Eddie Stone Elementary School, and we do give a series of senior awards out. The Eddie Stone Biddy Basketball Award, the Eddie Stone Business Community Award, the The Eddie Stone Biddy Basketball Award, the Eddie Stone Business Community Award, the Eddie Stone Homecoming Award, which I have to thank Miss Macheski for going into the jewelry box and getting the pendant from the old Eddie Stone High School, which made it up onto the website. Do you have the classroom? But also, those individuals that prematurely passed, that we do have scholarships and awards named after. Susan Cowan de Battio Memorial Award, the Joseph Hughes Memorial Scholarship, and the Andy Cochran Memorial Scholarship. So, I do thank these families for reaching out to the borough, making sure that we've got photos of their loved ones, and, you know, I think we've tastefully captured what these individuals have done to make an impact in the borough. So, please be on the lookout for www.eddystoneborough.org. It is packed full of information. If you've got a question on the number of trash cans that you're allowed to have outside your curb, the answer is four. If you have a question about the total weight that you can have in your trash can, the answer is fifty pounds. And the reason I know these is because it's all on the website. So, please take an opportunity in days to come to look at the website, and this document is only as good as the information we feed it. So, I will give you a commitment from the Borough Council Table that, you know, we will continue to update this on a weekly basis. We've already taken action. We've got, Mr. Wilson has agreed to do what I call curating, but administration worries. I want to get the blogs up and running, get to make sure the calendar's up to date, make sure that we upload the videos, make sure that we upload the meeting minutes for all the Borough Council meetings. So, it will be a very, very useful tool for us that's going to serve us well in Eddie Stone for years to come.
I have one last question.
Yes.
Can I ask, who made the decision to change the locks at Light House Hall eight weeks ago without notifying BURREC or giving them keys?
Actually, I was asked, since we're having the locksmith down there, to re-lock because we did not have the key for Mr. Seaver's room. I was asked to have the locks switched that we could get into Seaver's room, and why the locksmith that's down there, to have them change the locks. The locks were changed, and the locks were not locked. You could still get in if you used your key fob.
Has any of the REC members told that?
Well, they don't return your phone call.
I'm going to step in, and I'm going to say, "I made the decision to change the locks." I also made sure that Councilman Patterson got the information to make sure that the key fob system was working, and that, you know, I have had a relationship with the Quins, and, you know, a simple phone call would have resolved the situation as opposed to someone taking drastic action like tendering a resignation. I certainly hope that Norm Quinn, Hope Quinn, and Christine Cochran did not resign because of the fact that the locks were changed on Light House Hall.
And they were not given the keys, or was it given the keys?
It was Summer Camp.
Okay. Point made, that's all.
I don't understand the point.
My point is, why would you not give the President of Recreation keys?
Because he doesn't call me back or text me back.
Were you down at Summer Camp?
Yes, I was.
Were you, did you see Hope Quinn down there?
Yes. And I said hi to her, and she just gave me like a smudge. So, what I did is, I left the fob key available. Their fob key's still operated and functioning.
Once again, I certainly hope that we do not have the tender of a resignation of three REC board members, including the President and the Secretary and Treasurer, over something as...
And I'll get you further and say that if you turn around and say that you're the REC board liaison, and you're on the REC board, that it was a political move to change that. No, it was a political move to have you doing both at the same time.
If you don't want me to bring up what I'm just going to bring up, where is your camper parked? Is it parked in an illegal spot, Dana?
What is it?
That's a personal question, Ms. Thompson.
I am bringing that up because he's on council, and he should abide by the rules of the town.
That's a personal question.
No, 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 no. That's fine, that's actually fine. That's actually fine. Councilwoman Thompson, this is why I made the purchase of my RV. I went to Chief Macheski, I looked up the ordinances. I was not allowed to put a trailer back there. I was only permitted to put a motor vehicle back there, so that's why I purchased what I purchased, and it's parked there. I did request the permission before I made the purchase.
When they have a void class.
Do we have any other business before council this evening, before I make a motion to adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.